No, I don't want audio from here. Only took two of us.
That's okay.
It's better than three, right?
A grand total of over 100 years of life, that's why it took so long.
There's four of it tonight, huh?
All right, well, it is 7:03 and I'll call this Berry City Council meeting to order this Tuesday, September 20th, 2022 at 7:03 PM. Councillors present tonight include councillor Dearing, councillor Sean Bell, councillor Booton, councillor Stockwell, councillor Lozón, and joining us remotely councillor Wazak. Staff joining us tonight, we have manager Stella Castro, clerk treasurer Dawes, public works director Ahern, finance director Monahan, and I think, I think that's it. Anybody else? Manager? Tonight's agenda is available online and in the back of the room. This meeting has been publicly posted as being recorded and broadcast and subject to Vermont's open meeting law and the council's rules of procedure, which are available online. I'd like to offer a warm welcome to the guests joining us in person and online. And if you're joining us online, please keep in mind that the chat function should only be used for technical issues or difficulties. If you would like to be recognized, please raise your hand or signal that you would like to be recognized and those in the room should come to the front table. I'll call in speakers in order, allowing people who haven't spoken to speak first and limiting time if necessary to do the city's business. I'll ask that you state your name for the record and speak into the microphone so council and the public can hear you. I want to thank everybody in advance for participating in a civil and respectful manner. If you have any questions about process or procedure, please ask and we'll get it sorted. And with that, that takes us to item number two on the agenda, adjustments to the agenda. Manager Stella Castro?
No adjustments, Mayor.
Any other members of council have any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing and seeing none, that takes us to item three, visitors and communication. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to items that are not on the agenda, but you can speak to any item related to an item that is on the agenda when we take up that, that matter. Is there any item the member of public would like to speak to that's not on the agenda tonight? Okay, hearing and seeing none, that takes us to the item four, the consent agenda. On that tonight, we have approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of September 3rd. It looks like it is, is, I can't quite read from Heather Slaton. Do you have an item that you would like to speak to, 100 visitors and communication?
I do. Is this where you just take public comment?
That it is.
Okay. I do, sorry, it took me a minute to find the raise hand option there. I'll just lower that now. I do have a statement I'd like to make. My name is Heather Slaton. I am a Berry Town homeowner and taxpayer, but my office is in Berry City. My husband and I have several children in the BUUSD. We are foster adoptive parents through the Berry City District DCF office and we spend almost all of our entertainment, dining and retail dollars right here in Berry City. We also contribute heavily to several charities in Berry City. Sitting on several committees myself, both at work and on volunteer committees, I have some concerns about what I see going on during your meetings. The most concerning of these is the current situation with a diversity and equity committee. A total of three DNE committee meetings in 2021 and three more in 2022 have no public meeting minutes available. Four of these violate the open meeting law requirement that minutes be available within 30 days or within three meetings, whichever of these are later. This makes it quite difficult to obtain information straight from the horse's mouth, as they say, so I'm forced to rely on newspaper accounts for the following information. By your own website's definition, inclusion is defined as the following. Inclusion embraces diversity and provides a safe and unconditional sense of belonging. This is not even true in your committee meetings or for its own members. Chair Mulvaney has, according to these news accounts, deemed a pattern of behavior by member Toborg unacceptable. According to the only public information available to us, this behavior was in public. It was also not a behavior, but a personal belief and not one that was brought into the dealings of the committee as far as one can tell from the meeting minutes that have actually been published. It does seem however, that Mr Toborg's beliefs were dragged into the meetings quite loudly by Ms Mulvaney, just so she could then persecute him for them. This seems extremely counterproductive to inclusion to me. I would question whether using one's personal computer should be the norm to record city committee meetings, whether pausing them should be happening, and frankly, whether a person should be speaking for an entire gender at any point. Ms Mulvaney using the term anti-women hate speech when referring to Mr Toborg's personally held pro-life belief should not be viewed as any such thing, and I am saying that as a woman. While it is clear some committee members see the value of embracing the spirit of inclusion by considering or at least including people on the committee with many differing views and thoughts, it is also painfully obvious that this is not the same for the entire committee. It would seem as your affirmation statement of the committee apply implies that would in fact be the entire point of the committee. Is this committee even productive at this point? Is it going to wind up being another debacle like what we have seen happening at recent BUUSD meetings? If so, I wonder how long that will go on and what resources and time will be wasted that could be better spent in a solutions-based manner elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And I see that former mayor Herring is on the call, just to shout out to Lucas. All right, so that takes us to the consent agenda, item three. We have on three items on the consent agenda, approval of the minutes to the regular city council meeting of September 13th, 2022, approval of the city warrants from the week of Wednesday, September 21st, 2022, and the clerks offices licenses and permits. Are there any on there for, so it's just the first two. Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Motion by councillor Stockwell, second by councillor Sean Bell. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it, the consent agenda is adopted, we'll get those minutes in the vault and the warrants paid. That takes us to item five on our agenda, the city clerk and treasurers report. Clerk treasurer Dawes?
Just a couple of quick things. The, our first quarter property tax deadline was last Thursday. We still have a couple of payments trickling in. We do accept US post office postmark, so it does take a few days to get the, the last few in. But as of yesterday, we were right around the 5% target, which I, I like to, to hit for delinquency per quarter, so I'm pleased about that. And just a reminder that water and sewer bills are due by the end of the month. So you've got until the 30th, which is next Friday? Friday, I believe. On, and you can come into the office, you can put them in the mail, make sure they have a US post office postmark. There's a Dropbox to the right of the front door, city hall, and we also do accept online payments through the portal on our website. There are service charges that apply to the online payments. And lastly, the secretary of state's office has announced that ballots are going in the mail by next Monday at the latest to all active voters. So you should be receiving your ballots sometime next week.
Thank you, any questions for clerk treasurer Dawes? Hearing and seeing none, that takes us to the liquor control board. Do we have any liquor items?
Yep.
With no liquor control items, that takes us to item seven, city manager's report.
Thanks, Mayor. Councillors, you have the department head report in your packet and just to supplement that, couple of items to note, actually from today. There's a water main break, Thomas Street, Gallo Ave, and I'm gonna, this is the new guy, Kynock Avenue, is that?
Yep.
Did I get it right? Okay. Kynock. Gonna write that down, sorry. And it occurred at 6:30 this morning. Bill's team, DPW was, they're taking care of it and they addressed it. I know they're working on the repairs today. And so we're asking, on our website and we've posted on social media, but homeowners on those streets, Gallo Avenue, Kynock Avenue and Thomas Street to run their outside hose for 10 minutes to clear discoloration. No boil water warning, just discoloration and it should be cleared. Heard some issues today on North Main Street wastewater pump station work on the road that was affected by the rain. This is work happening at US 302. Had some challenges with the impacts of the rain on the site due to the conditions left by the contractor. DPW staff was there to remediate this twice, contractor was responsive and should be in better shape. Luckily, this was, this was actually scheduled to be paved yesterday, couldn't be paved because of the rain, but we look like we might have a break in the weather tomorrow, so hopefully it'll be taken care of. I know that's a well-transited road. Just a reminder, both trash days coming up on the Saturday, the 24th at the BOR parking, front parking lot from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Mattresses, box springs, couches, chairs, yard toys, bikes, appliances, but please, no yard waste, no commercial waste and no paint. And that is for Berry City residents. And one, you know, one big item working on with the staff this past week is, as we all know, we had a big transition in the fire department last week, chief print last day was Friday. And on last week, I announced to the fire department and then to the city staff that deputy chief Joe Aldworth is going to be serving as the interim fire chief. So very thankful to Joe for accepting to take on that role. And he's started today, it's his first, this is his first week officially in that interim position. We are recruiting for a fire chief, we'll have a position posted, hoping to have that out this week. And we'll start a recruitment process for the permanent leader of the fire department. That's all.
Thank you, manager. I thought the event at the firehouse was just really, really nice and there were chiefs from all over Vermont coming up, wish chief print well, so that was just, just what a great kickoff.
It was very touching.
Any questions for the manager?
Councillor Booton? Well, councillor Lozón had his hand up first.
Thank you. Timeline on the, in terms of your, when you would hope to appoint the permanent chief? Yep, expected to be posted for 30 days. We'll go through a process of receiving applications, I imagine, for another 30 days, assuming we get some, some strong candidates. And then the process would include something similar to what was done for the police chief hire, which included committee stakeholders to help review the candidates and interview candidates and create some, a list of finalists. So give or take 75 to 90 days. Ideally. Give or take. Ideally, yeah. Thank you. Yep.
Councillor Booton?
Yeah, regarding the, the water main break, the water, just, just as a public surface announcement for folks, the brown water does not mean that it's unsafe. It just means that there's sediment in it and it's like the really expensive water that you buy at the store with minerals. Except for just lay off your. More minerals, but it's not, it's, there was no, there was no negative flow pressure, which that is when we have problems and we do boil notices. So just want anybody that's listening to know that.
Pretend it's tea.
Yeah, pretend it's tea. Or make tea and then you have, it's a little more brown. But no, it just, it's important to note that the water is not unsafe. It's, it's perfectly safe, it just has some minerals in it.
Councillor Dearing?
I just wanted to take note of acting chief Joe and I know I worked with him on Monday because I'd come in because we were having an issue with Casella and some, some more early pickup stuff. And he handled that right away. So I really just wanted to make everyone aware that really his first day as chief really went above and beyond for me to address some constituent concerns that we've been having. So thank you.
Thank you.
The 22 Hill Street RFP, did that deadline, I'm trying to remember from last week.
It passed and there's one applicant.
There's one applicant, okay. Well, that should make scoring a little bit easier for us, so, all right.
So, and I shared information with the two of you and I'm still waiting to hear back. I had two questions in my email that I need responses on before I can put together the information for the packet. Oh. So if you'll go back and look at my email.
Yeah. So the first answer is fine.
Well, it was, it was a question about did the score sheet look okay? And then.
Yeah, and that looked.
I want to make sure that we're, that we're all on the same page with regards to what information in the proposal is public. It is a real estate offer, so I want to make sure that we've, that we, we all agree what should be redacted and what should be made public.
Good conversation for the manager and the full council. I mean, I would believe that until such time as, you know, depending on what we do with this one application, I would say until we make a decision, it's, none of it is public. Fair enough. Once we make a decision, I don't have a problem releasing everything and of course, we have an obligation to, but.
Then, then I would recommend that the discussion be had in executive session next week. Rather than in open session.
Yep. Depending on how quickly we move through this meeting, maybe we could just have, we could tee it up a little. It's not terribly complex. So we could maybe tee it up a little this week and then get it right out to the council and the interest of saving time, but we'll see, you know, we'll see if the mayor is in a good mood by the end of the meeting and if he'll entertain.
All right, any other questions for the city manager? All right, hearing and seeing none, that takes us to made unfinished business, which there's known, so item nine, new business, we have as our first item of new business, approve, consideration of approval of Benwell architect contract amendment phase one B, and we have public works director. Aaron, welcome, Bill, how are you?
Thank you. Asked out just a list of sites.
Thank you, sir.
The list had seven city properties on it as well as four privately owned properties. And, and this will just give you a chance to see what we looked across in that preliminary phase. For the record, my name is Bill Ahern, I'm the director of public works for the city of Berry. And on August 30th, our architect came and made a brief presentation to you that detailed we had only found one feasible site out of the four sites that we looked at. The existing Burnham Street site is too small. The Route 302 site is inaccessible without excessive cost. The Allen Street West site had a substantial wetlands component, more than 70% of the property was determined to be wetland. And the Allen Street East site was the only one that was viable. The Allen Street East site had some technical changes, particularly the slope. And the, the changes in elevation across the area needed for the DPW facility would approach 60 feet, 30 feet of fill, 30 feet of cut. So it would require a substantial amount of site work. In order to, to move towards a feasible location and assure that the city is making a good decision, we would like to engage Benwell for an additional round of site evaluations. And particularly, one of the things that we've asked them to look at is to broaden the scope and to consider buildings and, and locations outside the city, but near to the city on the, the criteria that we included, such as centrality to the city, the idea of utilities, the idea of access. And the, the second component was we're, we're looking at existing buildings within the city. And the fire department was actually helpful in identifying several locations that are currently vacant, one of which, while it isn't a full six acre site, it's, it's a little bit over four. And so it might be something that could be worked with, with some alterations to the facility itself. So the, the proposal provides for them to examine generally available locations and based on geography, so they would use topographic mapping. The statewide our map actually has one foot contours and they would be looking for areas that were contiguous that had five to six acres on them. But the process that the city used was constrained by looking at the lot size based on their tax map. So we could look between the tax map and we could look at topographic topography of the same areas, but being able to look for, say, a five contiguous, contiguous acre parcel that might have been in seven pieces, couldn't be done on, on the city's process. And so we want to do that geography-based evaluation within the city and near to it. We want to look at locations in the town expressly, which we had ruled out in the preliminary screening. And, and then lastly, we want to rank what sites we can find and determine if any of them are better than the Allen Street East site that we already have an option on. The goal for this was to be completed and I'm, I'm three weeks late already getting this to you. The goal was to have the site sighting process completed, site review process completed in November and then be back with a draft document for the council to examine that basically said, here's the results of the, the second site assessments and how the facility would fit on it. And then come back to the council with the finished final report in February. That's possible, but unlikely, more likely it would be after. I'm, I'm the person who was unduly optimistic, who suggested that we might have a bond vote in March. We, we will not. And both based on timing and, and based on process, our goal was to have some level of funding commitment for purposes of US RDA grant process, but the reality is we won't have a well enough defined facility plan to have anything more than a general estimate. We wouldn't be in a position in February. If, if we can get to a bond vote later in the year, that would be desirable, but I, I'm not certain that we can still with the price where it is.
Councillor Booton? Now, are you, Bill, just to make sure you're, you're finished?
I'm, I'm good, yeah. So. Billy, you're gonna hate me. I'll just be very honest. I, I've heard a lot of feedback about this, we're, you know, a $30 million project is, is, I, I think it's too much. And, and I understand the. So I'm gonna vote no on this and the reason why I'm voting no is because I think we have to, I, I, I think we actually have to go back and look at what we currently have in trashing what we have and building from there. So for example, the, the one building that the roof is literally caving in, that would be the first one that we do and replace it with a new building. I, I, and I'm really sorry. I, I know you've put a lot of work into this and I, I'm just, just telling you where I stand on this.
Councillor Stockwell?
But isn't it possible to buy land for this project and not do it all or to do it in stages so that you can take the worst parts and you could start building some?
So I, I think process wise, that is a request that the council made. And initially, we didn't find an easy way to do that. The, the longer answer is yes, it is possible. And there are some hard choices that can be made, but we'd like to actually identify what through our facilities. For instance, if we were to place the water and sewer, well, the sewer department in particular at the wastewater plant and keep water with streets. It takes perhaps 15,000 square feet of the building area and moves it to the wastewater treatment plant. Again, we have existing facilities there, I don't have a building, we haven't looked at those estimates. And so the, the concern is on a, on a preliminary planning basis, those numbers would be expected to go up in terms of doing a deeper dive on them and deciding what we give up, how we place it, whether we can use existing utilities on the wastewater plant site. That is something that would come later in the process. So, so this effort is at finding a new site for the entire facility because we don't think we've exhausted that adequately. And it doesn't preclude reducing either the size of the facility or changing the sequence of, of build out. And, and again, we've, we've been thinking about this within DPW. We want to work with our architect who is the expert in designing and building it, but for instance, we could actually use a temporary remote storage of sand and salt. We do that to some degree now with sand where we haul it to Farwell and we haul it back. There are other things we could look at, but it's, we're in a preliminary portion of this process. And if we drop to that now, we would never find the best available location. And, and that's where we are at the moment. We've, we've thrown out that number because we don't want to mislead anyone. And, and frankly, we've recognized that the city cannot afford a $30 million facility. That's all that there is to that. If we look at all of our combined need, that's not within reach. At the same time with available funding programs and, and potential for either congressionally directed spending or eligibility under IIJA. It's, it's a good time for us to have something in preparation so that if there's money that's unspent and must be encumbered, the city of Berry would be in the right place at the right time to take advantage of that federal money. So if, if you were to ask me, do I expect this to go forward at, at that full price? My answer would be absolutely not. But it makes sense to develop this to a point, both in process and in time, where we know that we won't be able to secure that funding and then to cut back and, and alter the facility planning, both in terms of the process we complete and the scale of the buildings that we construct. So this is, this is just trying to wrap up that sighting evaluation phase and place the, the full facility on it and come up with a firm price rather than something that we say is more than 30 million. When you do final numbers, some of the contingency can come off because you'll actually have design. So for instance, we're using placeholders for electrical and mechanical systems. If we had real numbers on that, we might find that the values we chose, given the current bidding climate, which were intentionally conservative, could come down. So, so what, I can't tell you what the real number is, I can tell you that we've used a number that we feel would be entirely reliable and unlikely to be. I can tell you that we've used a number that we feel would be entirely reliable and unlikely to be exceeded. Because we don't want to start out with a number and then come back to the public later and say, whoops, we missed by twenty percent.
You're making some really good points there, Bill. And and before jumping to Teddy, I just had a question about. The the Benwell's relationship with the Wolf Engineering. So the the Wolf is a subcontractor of Benwell, and they're the they're the primary contractor?
That's correct.
Okay, and the Wolf's been part of the this site, the the team, project team since the beginning?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Counselor Wasak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, but I I want to ask you a few what I feel are obvious questions, but I just want to make sure I have the right understanding of them. My understanding is, A, that the current DPW facility is either completely or a majority within the flood, so.
More more than seventy percent of the land area of the existing site is within the flood plain and below the flood elevation.
And it's my understanding that building, constructing within the flood plain is more expensive than not building within the flood plain.
And that is generally true because you have to raise the site up. And and I think the second element is that even if we raise the site up. The entry at Burnham Street will always be problematic by virtue of the river being directly beside the approach to the facility.
That was that, that's what the next one I was gonna ask was, it's also my understanding that the current facility as it sits now, or the land as it sits now, would be inaccessible in the event of a hundred year flood. Which we've seen dozens of throughout the country in the past couple of years.
That's a a complicated issue, because I believe the answer is that we're going to get the tires wet. It might be on the rims to go around the corner, but. The elevation between the intersection at Burnham Street. And where Burnham Street actually is beside the city garage actually drops about three and a half feet. And the the flood elevation is about two and a half feet above that. That plateau over there.
Okay.
So. Literally, you couldn't get there without driving through water. But we should be able to change the grades on Burnham and the hill enough so that. You could drive through a small amount of water. If we only get the hundred year elevation.
Right.
And we. We've seen much more than that in the last five years.
Yep, definitely. Okay, great, thank you. So I think that, you know, it's. I have not spoken to anyone, and Bill, you may or may not feel this way. I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but I think it's a safe bet to assume. That you believe, and I know many of my constituents believe that what we have right now cannot keep. Going on. It is time to do something with this facility. DPW needs a new garage. We need new facilities. And I'm not saying we have to spend thirty million dollars on it, but I'm saying we have to spend something on it, because if. I don't know anyone who thinks that we don't need to improve at minimum, like dramatically improve. The facilities that we have now. Counselor Booton mentioned the holes in the ceilings of some of these places, and we've heard time and time again in council, the operational difficulties that the director and the staff face. In trying to get the right trucks out at the right time, and it's i- it's like Tetris, trying to fit all the equipment in there in a way. So that it does not become damaged due to collision with other vehicles, other equipment, or just due to exposure from the elements. You know, I've seen. The 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 equipment graveyard that exists outside of things that might be able to be used eventually, or we're trying to sell, and they're just sitting in the snow. Throughout the winter, and these things are not tenable. So I I I think that I I hear what Count Lieutenant Booton is saying, and I don't think that we have to spend thirty million dollars to do this. But if that's what it costs long term, that's what it's going to cost long term, and we're going to have to plan for that. So. My question, now that I can get off my soapbox, my actual question is the forty thousand dollars. That is being, is it forty thousand dollars? Am I reading the memo correctly? Thirty nine thousand? For the additional services that are being requested in the memo?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, and what does that bring the total? Cost of the contract to?
The original contract was for forty five thousand and eight hundred something, I believe, so the the total price. Between the two will be about eighty four thousand dollars. The original bond amount that was allocated for this activity was eighty thousand dollars. So there is a shortfall of four thousand that we would attempt to, we would cover. Out of the DPW budget by reducing expenses in some some category. I don't have a defined location for that.
Okay, so I I guess that my concern is more is is more with the forty thousand. Rather than the overall cost of the building, just because I feel that we have had. I feel that a lot of the systems that we'd be paying for to get set up with these. I'm unsure as to why, even though a lot of the work's being done, we've had a lot of conversations with them, and these systems are in place. I'm unsure why we're basically paying for the contract again, even though I know we're asking them to go back out. And resolicit some more bids and look at some more sites, but that to me does not raise to the level of. Doubling all the work that they've already done. And maybe I'm wrong, I'm not as experienced with these things, but that's what jumped out to me, so I just ask you to respond to that.
And so so your observation. Were we paying the full forty five thousand eight hundred would be correct. But we actually haven't expended any of the the costs that were allocated for the electrical or mechanical. And so the the initial contract. Will actually underrun, and they're they're carrying the cost forward for that work. And they're included in Phase One B. So the electrical mechanical work was postponed. And not completed in Phase One A. Because basically, as we started, we got to that point, we recognized we had more sighting issues. So we didn't close out all the work in the initial forty five thousand dollar contract. The portions of it that are undone will not be invoiced for in that contract. They've been passed into One B. And I I actually had this conversation with Benwell. In the scope development, so we we knew we didn't actually complete, for instance, the final site design. What would the cut fill balances be? And and actually do a sighting. Cost. So those things were omitted in Phase One A. And would be picked up in Phase One B. I I apologize, I don't have the amount that was expended on the contract to date, which would have been. Full information for the council.
Your hand up, but is there any council that hasn't spoken yet that would like to ask a question? I don't, Counselor Stockwell, you have it.
I did ask.
Oh, you did. You know, Counselor Lozong. Go ahead.
So the list here of possible locations, this are. The bottom part of the list is. Is locations that are they're not going to work, and the top part of the list is locations are going to get more closely, or?
So so actually, the ones on the top list were excluded on a preliminary basis. The ones below have not been assessed, and and some of those have been brought to our attention since then. Or some were initially omitted intentionally, and I I raised the Bailey Street. Environments as an example, where there's two hundred acres plus of land holding in the city. With very reasonable topography. But it's not centrally located at all. It is literally a prime development potential for the city in the future for higher value use. And so we didn't even, we didn't look at that. We did look, there's a hundred and fifty nine acre parcel that fronts on Railroad Street and backs up against the Bailey Street property. Its slope is is substantial, its average slope is probably six percent. There are areas in it that, again, aren't are similar in terms of challenge to the. Allen Street East site in terms of cutting and filling. We didn't pursue it for that reason, because the slope differentials were so great. But in in looking at what we finished with, if it's. Less in price, or if it's less to develop a site there because it's more remote. Those are all things that we wouldn't know until we finished Phase One B. So we would. I would expect to bring these properties all to the attention of our. Architect and have them include them in their their screening level. What's the topography look like? Is there a way to fit the facility there? There are other properties on this list that include existing buildings. That as a as a matter of course, the first round through. We were hoping to find a site that didn't have a building on it and would be less expensive by not having. To purchase a building, we would then decommission or or. Them all.
Counselor Lozong.
Thank you, Mr. Sterling Castro. Assume you're recommending approval?
Yes, I am.
To move.
Second.
Is there a second? Second by Counselor.
So if we go outside of the city, are we going to pay taxes on that? So. One of the opportunities, and I believe the clerk mentioned it, is for the city to to look at those properties as a tax exempt entity. And see whether or not some type of agreement can be negotiated with the adjoining community.
If it's if it's not, do you have an idea of how much it'll be annually for taxes on that? Quite a bit, right?
I I would expect, based on the tax rate in the town and.
Which town?
I use the tax rate for Barrytown. Berlin's tax rate would actually be substantially better. But I had used Barrytown because we know that there are several locations where the city abuts the town. And and even the the Hope Cemetery sites, actually, one of the two is fully in the town. One of them is about forty percent in the town. And so. That was my my focus. And again, one of the concerns I have is that if you look at the tax rate on the. On the estimated value currently. The tax is very substantial. Well north of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
I believe that if that if we owned property and we're using it for municipal purposes, that it would be tax exempt, but I would need to do. More research into that. I mean, the 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 Hope Cemetery, we get dinged because we have a, because we use it commercially, we have a tra- trailer on there. On, we pay taxes on the Pex Pond property because we're not using it. On, so I mean, there are things like that, but I believe that that if we were using it for municipal purposes. There would be an opportunity for exemption.
My my experience with with taxation of town forests that are owned by one municipality but located in others, that. The taxes are due to the other municipality, and that happens through examples, and that's purely undeveloped land, but. Still can end up with substantial tax tax bills. When I think about the public works garage and all the kind of priorities of the city. To me, it's probably number one, if not the top three, it's definitely above. A, looking at the working conditions down there, it's definitely above AC in the auditorium. It's above renovations of City Hall. I think it's it's something that has a tremendous urgency and is really, really important. And want to get to some workable solutions. It's also going to be just based on the price. My assessment is it's going to be. A project that. Will face a lot of scrutiny from the voters and really needs substantial public participation and incremental buy-in. And when I look at that contract and I look at that, they're only going to be evaluating three sites. And that the public participation is, we're going to post information on the website. To me, that approach. Isn't isn't going to land, isn't going to land this plane, and. As I think back, reflect back on kind of the the what the work that was done over the past few months, I I reviewed the video from last, the last meeting that I missed, and I thought. Everybody asked such fantastic questions, and the consultants had. Great answers, but I I am a little concerned that the tail is wagging the dog in terms of, starting with. The the ideal versus starting with some constraints and like looking at the sites and really understanding. The criteria from what does it mean if we build on a flood plain? How would we have to flood proof the building? What would that cost? What are the, what would be the operational costs of locating three miles from the city boundary? Or five miles from the city boundary, because that's a lot of staff time, that's a lot of fuel, that's potentially taxes. And I I I had some concerns about the sites that were looked at and some that weren't looked at, for instance, like the Farwell Street. Which has a baseball field, and of course, it's a lot easier to relocate a baseball field than a public works garage, but it's a pretty large site, and I I heard. In last meeting that that the soil was a little soft there, and yet we investigated. And ran down a delineation for what was observably a swamp. And so, and that's where I was kind of wondering where. If the Wolf was on board and what type of site assessments they were doing at particular times and and. Who's going to be at the table for some of these discussions, and could we? Could we tap some of the talent of retired people at D E C? That know some of the regulatory permitting programs or retired engineer to get some, like a public works commission, like many communities have. To bring more public participation to to the project. Also, that the the first phase didn't have any integration of renewable energy was a concern to me, and another factor that although might have a larger upfront cost. Could result in operational savings. And so. I I I don't think council should man- micromanage what. Sites end up, but we do need to really buy into and understand what criteria is being used to evaluate the sites. And understanding, is this a preference? Or is this a real constraint? And if it is a development constraint, to what degree is it a constraint? And then starting with, what can we, what can we afford? And we may not know that until we see the capital plan, and we may not know that until. We have an opinion on our bonding capacity, but all these things make me think that we might need to. R- rethink the approach to the RFP. And an evaluation of the the this land in the city, and particularly city owned property already. To make sure that we're really ruling it out, as this is just not feasible. We shouldn't, we should, we shouldn't look at these before we look at. Land outside the city. So those are, those are some of my concerns and feedback that I would I'd provide. I don't, I don't think I can support this thirty nine, although I I think there are opportunities to improve it and bring it back and. From my one of seven. And. And make sure that we're really getting the services that you need as a public, as a very busy public works director. To to land this plane, because it's so important. That we do. I think it's an important project. So we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I thought Counselor Booton had his hand up.
No, I'm also.
All right, hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. I'm not sure if I.
I just want to make sure.
Aye.
Aye.
Teddy, you were an aye?
Aye.
Thank you. And the nays?
Okay, that's, I hadn't heard, Counselor Derry. Thank you.
So it was a a four three.
Yeah, favor, okay.
Phil, you do a good job.
Just so you know, I I I appreciate your support. I understand your concerns and and. One of the things that I I will go away from tonight with is to. Look at how I can engage the public, particularly in the criteria. Selection and waiting, which the public wasn't involved in. And and look harder at the question of how do we make this particular facility smaller? With the goal of essentially trimming costs, not not just that we want to shrink it, but that we want to look for ways. And and if that means looking at splitting the department. You know, that can't be out of the question. But that won't be directly involved in this scope, other than looking at whether a solid, smaller site might fit. But it is something that I I take away from our conversation tonight.
Appreciate that. I know that a common concern that I had from a couple of my constituents. One in particular, Burn Rose, made it clear that she was upset because we had discussed. One in particular, Bern Rose, made it clear that she was upset because we had discussed a couple of Allen Street locations. And didn't talk to anybody really on Allen Street about the impacts of that. So just community involvement, like you said, I think is really, really important. So thank you for taking notice on that.
Good.
Thank you. That takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is the ARPA community feedback process. And Mr. Strel Castro.
Thank you, Mayor. So council tonight, hoping to get your approval for the release and posting of a letter of interest to be placed on our website so we can begin the public engagement process for our the innovation, community innovation funding. And you that was in your packet for review. I have been. In a challenging process to find someone who can help us with this process to seek that input. But I'm very close to signing an agreement, a contract with with someone to do just that. The Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission is also going to provide some staff support to that that consultant. Who will be helping us with the public feedback process. So I'm very excited that we will have some some, you know, two people working on this. With, of course, my I will be working very closely with them on it. And the the timeline that I've been working through with this individual is really today, starting with today. The the posting of the letter of intent form if the council deems it appropriate. In early October, we would launch a survey tool through the city's website, through social media. We would find ways to get this out through our committee chairs, just however we can reach our community, we will. In mid-November, we'd be looking at doing a the public forum. And thought, actually, this came up in one of the department head meetings. That be great idea to use the general election to to hand out flyers about the public forum. So to get even more interest and and participation. And then really looking at a December, early January process to have a report rolled up that we can use and integrate into our FY24 budget process. So anyway, very excited that it's been tough to find people to do this work. Seem to be really close to getting someone who has really good community engagement experience. Has done some work with towns and community team in Vermont, of course. And really want to get this process kicked off because I know there's lots of folks in the community who have lots of ideas and want to get this form out there so that we don't lose these two weeks. You know, want to get people working on them. And when early October kicks in, we have the survey tool, we have something to to start working off of. That's really it.
Also during.
Who's going to select the projects that the? The individual or the group is going to pick? You know, so the, does that make sense?
Yeah, and I I think that'll it'll be this group here. I think the the my direction to the folks that will be helping us on this is gather the information, seek the community input. I I can't imagine a process would be screening that I want counsel to see what comes in. I also want, you know, to get a sense of where the 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 interest is. And so could envision a, you know, would envision a report that lays out what comes in and also documenting the metrics of what level of interest it had from the community.
Awesome. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Council was a zook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to say first to the public, I know it's been a long time coming, but we are here. So I am excited for folks to start getting more involved and getting more information about this process. And just thanks to manager Storla Castro for making this a priority and getting us here. Are you looking for a motion to approve?
Yes, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second and under further discussion, I see council goes on.
Yeah, thank you. I kind of cringe every time I see this allocation of a million dollars for municipal infrastructure, a million dollars for housing initiatives and 500 for the community innovation. I mean, I consider this sort of starting with a fresh slate. You know, there's no such thing as informal agreement among the city council. You either vote it or you don't. And, you know, the allocation, I I don't want to go into the process. Influencing folks who might be submitting because, you know, since January 11th of 22, we elected new council members. We elected a new mayor. You know, circumstances around the country and in Vermont have certainly changed in terms of certainly in terms of housing and the cost of housing. So I'd like not to reference that going forward. It only because I I don't want to, only because it never happened. There is no such thing as an informal agreement amongst a city council. Like I said, you vote it or you don't. And and you didn't. They didn't, excuse me.
With the mover and the seconder. Accept that as a friendly amendment or did you want to, as a council codify that decision?
No, I was just raising my hand to say that's fine by me to take out that language. You know, if someone has a someone has an actual million dollar idea, I wouldn't want them to be discouraged from sharing that. So that's fine by me.
There's a mover and the seconder.
Yeah, this councillor, Chen Bell. Yeah.
Okay. So we'll remove that reference from the motion. Any further discussion on this? Councillor Booton.
Yeah, I mean, I still am not a big fan of the consultant, but moving forward is something that we need to do.
I would just add that really appreciative that that you made this a priority and 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 line somebody up and and have a have a team approach. And that we have an opportunity to start getting ideas from the community. I know there's a lot of pressure. I've gotten a lot of emails and about this. And people are wanting to know that the city is developing a plan. And this is this is step on the doing it. So I'm I'm excited to support this motion. So unless there's any further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it. That takes us to our budget kickoff as an item of new business.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. So council, you have a PowerPoint that was included in the packet and I'll just be running through that. We'll try to let you know what slide I'm on. And I know Don is joining here on the video. She'll, I'm sure, jump in to help me or correct me if as needed. So thank you. Just a quick roadmap, want to talk a little bit about where we are in FY23 as of today. Talk about where we start our conversation about FY24. Then propose a, you know, our process for how we'll get to a budget for FY24 for council approval. And then really want to spend most of the time here on item four, which is hearing council, you know, discussion from the council. The council priorities, parameters, guardrails. So that Don and I can can work with our department heads to to get us to a budget that that you approve. So at slide three. Update here on on where FY23 stands, that first bullet there is just the the approved numbers for the general fund and tax rate. Just a reminder, the FY23 budget includes two subsidies. One is $50,000 of unreserved fund balance and the other's 100,000 in ARPA funding for two positions. We've had some changes since FY, this is one of the challenges, of course, of doing your budget sort of way ahead of schedule is that things change when you're in the budget year. We've been notified that we're going to have a loss of cell tower revenue from a rental at the odd. Of course, fuel prices, supply chain just shot up and were major challenges. You have some some figures there just on the price of of the fuel that where we budgeted and where it is. And, you know, I guess I I hesitate to say good thing because it's not a good thing. But we are, what's helping our budget not be in a total deficit is the fact that we have vacancy savings. And I I don't want to have vacancies because that means we have unfilled positions and we need people here working for the city. But in this situation, it it helps us get some savings in our in our budget to offset some of the increases that were unexpected. And then there's been 11% or thereabouts healthcare rate increase announced by the Green Mountain Care Board that will take effect in January. So that'll hit the the back end of FY23. So as we sit here today, FY23 is in a projected deficit. That's today. Look at that number in the bullet above is we have 45,000 monthly vacancy savings, which again, unfortunately, much of that will continue. And so you carry that out, we're going to be okay. But that's where we are today when we look at FY23. So where do we, when we started with the staff? What were the quote unquote baseline conditions of of FY24? What were we grappling with? Well, first of all, we have, we're going to have four collective bargaining agreements really to deal with. Fire has been signed as a 4% increase. Police has been signed at the 4% increase. Currently negotiating with USW. And ASME is projected to begin this fall. So we'll have to, that'll be also taken into account to FY24 once those are finalized. As I mentioned on the last slide, Green Mountain Care Board has announced 11% healthcare plan increases that will impact FY24. The loss of the cell tower revenue for a full fiscal year really hurts about 53,000 in the general fund. And of course, we can't count on those subsidies that I mentioned, the 100,000 in ARPA and the 50,000 in the fund balance. And we lose some cops grant funding. We're going to hit a cap there, so we'll lose some revenue for a grant that was supporting two positions in the police department. Fuel prices are getting better, but they're still going to be higher than the last time we went through this process. And we're still seeing some just things are more expensive and they're taking longer. And so those things won't necessarily disappear. Hopefully, they'll maybe in FY24 won't be an issue, but we can't count on that when we're building the budget. And then look, I the last bullet, I I'm not sure exactly how to say, but it's this thing that this notion that the things that we don't get done in FY23 are going to cost more to do in FY24. So I don't know how you put a number to that, but we just have to assume that that those things will be, we'll have to grapple with those. So what are the strategies for addressing these? You know, this this math is not the right math, right? The revenue, a couple of revenue. Pieces going down and some costs going up, that's that's bad budget math. How are we going to deal with it? First of all, we have the local option tax, which will be a big boost. Projected revenues of 750,000, which will help us with capital improvements. And so that will be that we'll have a full year of that in FY24. That will be helpful. Of course, we have ARPA funding that we're in the process of beginning to talk about. And how are there ways that that can help alleviate some of the the pressures on the budget? And and how do we, of course, stretch those ARPA dollars further? Use them as matches, just get squeeze every every dollar that we can out of that allocation. And then, of course, we have unreserved fund balance. And so, you know, I know as council, we've talked about this. I think, you know, my my recommendation to council would be that we'd be very prudent with this. These are this, my understanding is this is not a common occurrence for Barry to have a fund balance. We are, again, I'm not sure had the right words. We're this is a one of the maybe. Happened because of COVID, so we can't count on that happening again. And so at the same time, how do we strategically direct it for one time, nonrecurring expenses? In a way that also doesn't set us up for. Bump your tax increases in in the long term. We will have to grapple, for example, with how to replace a subsidy in FY24. That just if we have to make it up, if we use fund balance in 24, it just means we'll have to have a harder conversation in 25, basically, is is what it comes down to. So that said, it's there. We have, the charter says that we can only have 5% of it. So we may have to make some decisions about allocating and may have to go towards tax reduction. But it is a resource and we just have to be strategic about how we deploy it. So we don't just create a future fiscal cliff. So just the the big picture again, when you, when we sat down and went line by line in detail with Don and and every department head. Break this budget into the big pieces, our personal services, that's everything that's related to our people. The wages, the benefits, pensions, the fringe, all of that is increasing by $454,000 or 5.14%. That's really driven by that combination of the the contracts and the the healthcare rates. So when you split out everything else, right? The other than personal services, anything not related to people's supplies, contracts, trainings, all those things. Those costs are only increasing by $100,000 or 2.21%. So. Under if if we do nothing and if we present to you a budget. That that just pays for our labor contracts, pays for the healthcare rates that we have to pay. And basically keep everything else at normal operations. Our FY24 budget would increase by 553,000 or 4.15%. That would be no new initiatives. It would just basically be paying the bills that we are obligated to pay to our for payroll benefits. And then just basically maintaining level services for everything else. So that's that's not a good number. That's the number that the staff and I are going to start to work through. That's really what as when we finish this discussion, I would like to hear the council's directions on priorities and where we where we need to get these numbers to get it budget approved through here and through our voters. But that's basically the the baseline for if we do nothing. So just want you to have that context. Moving to slide seven. So this is just to give you a roadmap for what we'd like to do for as we continue in this process. This is just step one. And would like to, over the course of September, October, early November, start bringing in groups. Start bringing in our department heads to start going through the budgets of their their specific budgets on October 4th. Scheduled to have Grant Gager, who's been working with us on the capital improvement plan here to present that to you. Ideally, we'll get to a. Fully baked or as much baked as we can preliminary budget in December. And then in January would be January 17th is the last regular council meeting for us to for you all to approve a budget and warn for the town meeting day, which is on March 7th this year. So that's the that's the the next couple of months is how we plan to work through this process with you. Thought it would be helpful for you before you talk to department heads to know what the overall picture looks like. So that when you do talk to the department heads, you know, this is what we're grappling with. And so I know there's things everyone on this council has priorities and I I respect that. And I just want, you know, when we try to get those things done and we'll do what we can. It means we have to figure out other adjustments to make because of where we are at sort of our baseline starting condition. So really, that's it. Slide eight, just have some guiding questions, but really want to hear from from you all. About what we should be doing, what Don and I should be working with the department heads on. And how we should, what we should be focusing on when we start coming in with the department reviews later this month. And and into the fall.
Thank you for the excellent introduction to some of the budgetary pressures. Are there any questions about the PowerPoint before we start with council priorities and the discussion items?
Thanks. It seems very clear.
Thank you.
Little grim, but very clear.
I think it's great news. Serious. I mean, I can't remember the last time a manager came in and said, just to maintain services, it's going to be 4.15%, which really isn't even 4.15% because under charter, we're allowed a fund balance of 660. So you're projecting 734. So assuming that other 74 moves into the general fund, which is required by charter. Then you're at 375, 36, somewhere in there. That's not a bad place to start, to be honest with you, considering that we've got $750,000 in new revenue granted for infrastructure. But it's been a very, very long time since we had an increase or a revenue source of that magnitude. So, yeah, so thanks for that.
Well, if there are no questions about the the content, you outlined a few questions for us, so.
Yeah, I, you know, I I think it's really want to hear what council priorities are for the coming budget programmatically, operationally. Those things would be helpful. The funding levels, I mean, I can take a guess of what those might be, but I think it's important to hear from from you all. And really, the areas that we should be looking at for, you know, trade offs or, you know, when we do have to make sacrifices for to to get to the level we need to be. What are the things we need to look at or whether the, I know there's, there may be things, there's not anything that maybe people want to cover. What are the the least painful points? Those are the things we. But what are the the least painful points, those are the things we, that will help us as we develop a more complete product for you. So.
Who wants to start? Counselor was, I bet I can predict it too, but I won't say.
Oh, I mean, it's it's no secret, I've I've made these comments to the manager, to the rest of the council, to constituents. The line in the sand for me for this budget is I will, I'm loud and proud saying it now, I can already hear counselor Lozon chuckling at me. Drawing one of my lines in the sand, we know on any budget that does not make a down payment on body cameras for the PD. I know that the police chief has included this in his budget request, which we have not seen yet, as the manager laid out, we haven't gotten there yet. But we were, the police department was not successful, or that's not the right way to say it. We did not receive the grant for the body cameras that had, that we had applied for. But I do not think that that at all affects the importance of having them. And I spoke to, this subject came up at the most recent police advisory committee meeting, which was just a week ago. It was a week ago Monday, and if council wants a formal vote, I can get one, but the police advisory committee is also fully in support. Of a down payment on the body cameras for the PD this week, excuse me, this budget cycle, so. And I was, I was glad counselor Lozon brought up the charter about the five percent, cuz I thought the same thing too. So I don't know, you know, I think that there's a, that could be a capital thing, I don't know if necessarily has to be general fund. But I, so I think there's ways to work with it, but that's one of my lines in the sand for this budget.
Well, first of all, I chuckle about, I I don't chuckle about the subject matter, counselor, I just chuckle when you draw a line in the sand.
I know, I know.
I used to do that too a long time ago, and then after my other foot got sick of erasing that line. I I stopped doing it, but I, no, I would support that, I I think that's, that's a reasonable request. What what I would like to see is, you know, obviously continued investment in infrastructure. We may have to, we currently, I apologize, I should know this number as a sitting counselor, I don't. It's in five hundred thousand range that we currently allocate towards capital improvements. You know, so there's a little wiggle room there with the existing money, but I would absolutely, absolutely reduce any temptation to say. Well, we got seven fifty in new money plus five hundred, a million two, but gee, if we cut that down to a million, our budget problem goes away. I I really have, you know, an issue with that. Not too keen on additional positions, human resources, you know, additional positions within city government. Only because, you know, we are struggling to fill, and I know you're doing everything you can, Nicholas, but we're struggling to fill the positions we have. And I don't wanna get more depressed. And maintenance of services, I I really don't see, I don't see any areas where, where I would consider the city excessive. I, there's certainly areas where I'd love to do more, you know, areas like recreation and things for kids. But, you know, we've gotta be, we've gotta be realistic about what our taxpayers can can support. So, you know, again, I'm not interested in reducing, I'm not interested in going backwards, Nicholas. I'm I'm fine making the tough decisions, I I'll erase Teddy's line in the sand if you want me to. But, you know, I'm not afraid to make the tough decisions, but I'm really not interested in in looking at the budget, saying we had to move backwards.
And counselor Loz, I would just say on your infrastructure comment, I I agree with you, and I think once we see the capital improvement plan, you'll see why. We can't be making sacrifices there, cuz the needs are, that'll be a really comprehensive look at the the whole citywide need and it's. It's large, thank you.
Counselor Derry.
So I just wanted to add to what everybody's already said, I think that, you know, counselor was Zach has some great ideas, counselor Loz on has great ideas as well. I also know that we've talked about restoring the funding to the Hope Cemetery or to the cemetery budget. To get that back up to the funding that it was prior to COVID. I know that we had some conversations about that in the spring, about bringing that funding back up to where it was. So I just wanted to make sure that we were going to really kind of continue with that work. Because it is a pride in our community, the cemeteries, and really is a place that draws people in as well. So I just think that out of respect for not only the taxpayers, but also for, you know, the dead. To to really keep up on those and to bring the funding back to where it was.
I can, I can jump in, and the thing about sand is it's a very mobile line that can happen with wind and and water. But a couple of things on my list are, I'm really concerned about, really interested in rebuilding pipeline of capital projects. And and not only capital projects that are based on, I I won't use the term wish list, but. Identified needs, but an assessment, like which, I wanna see an assessment of streets. What's their condition, what's their sidewalks, by segment, which ones are we gonna get to? Same thing with any known pipe condition or the dam condition, so that capital decisions can be. Can be really informed by a comprehensive and coordinated look at the whole, the systems as a whole. And and I know we have, we have some capital funding that goes through the enterprise, but I I agree with counsel was on that. Trying to maintain as much capital investment as we can is important, where I would diverge from him though, is that. Capital projects take project managers and 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 that's where I think the cities are right now. And it in a kind of a weak position where a lot of staff are doing day to day triage. And and don't have the bandwidth to be able to focus on implementing this project or that project. And and so I, you know, I think there might need to be, with as many vacancies as we have, a look at some reorganization for both. Capital projects management, but perhaps also community and economic development. We have, we we send a lot of money to organizations that do great events management, they do a lot of communication work. But but what what seems like a gap is right now, and and perhaps one that could be. Approved through some performance based grant agreements is. A focus on community and economic development, cuz projects like that where you're laying TIF and you're laying outside. Laying outside partners and you're layering. Federal funding, you're like state granting relationship, that takes a lot of human capital to pull those types of things together. And and we're not gonna do those projects without people in city hall, so that's one thing. Another thing that would be top of my list is a website overhaul or some meeting management software. We've heard a lot of concerns about the, just the state of committee information or being able to access council packets. There's a lot of, lot of, it seems like it's time to look at that, that communications infrastructure in house. And and start making improvements there. The other thing that I would. Be interested in, just as a succession planning and and as a low budget thing, is if department heads were open to it. Some, some type of summer internships to build a talent pipeline, to build those relationships. And to see, not all interns work out, sometimes they're more worth than they're worth, sometimes they really pay off. But it, to see if there's space for that. And and on the recreation thing, if there's an opportunity to look at some of. Some wiggle in the budget to make those investment in enterprise activities that have revenue on the other side. Like, like investments up on the hill or or in major recreational events. Like a, like a marathon, that could bring in a lot of money and then subsidize youth recreation programming over the summer. That would be something that I'd, I'd be really be interested in seeing the the city invest in, so, so those are on my list.
Thank you.
I don't really know that I have anything more than what people have already said, but yes, infrastructure. And the development of a more energy efficient and that our buildings look, our buildings are more efficient. And our buildings are more pleasant to be in and that we invest in in some of the very basic buildings that we have. And for economic development, which I think is critical to our survival, that we, that we focus on on housing, that we look at the vacant housing. We look at places that we can build housing and partner with people so that we can make those things happen. Because our town is not gonna thrive if people can't find places to live here, it's really seems to me very basic. And energy efficiency seems like a good place to go, just in terms of reducing our costs further on down the road. If we have some money to increase our energy efficiency, that seems like a good investment.
Kind of piggy, piggyback off what you had said, counselor Stockwell, to, you know, work on energy efficiency. I think that to do some of that with the DPW site stuff. You know, we talk about how much heat we're losing, talk about all of those other things. And that whole situation kind of comes into play as well, so just thoughts thrown out there.
Anybody wanna give funding level percentages to the manager?
Increase percentages?
Yeah, well, you said you're.
Like I knew. I know what inflation is going to be in March of, I wouldn't be sitting here if I knew that. Now, you you know, things change, the environment changes, even even things like paving. Because petroleum prices are so high, price of hot mix goes through the roof. So, you know, I've thought at times, okay, is the city better off? You know, I get it, you're gonna have to drive down your bumpy street for another year, we didn't spend the money somewhere else, but we deferred that expenditure. Until petroleum prices calm down a little bit and we can maybe pave one point two miles next year. For every mile we could pave this year, so, you know, it's just about smart, strategic decisions. And, you know, I I don't see a, I don't see a world where inflation is less than four percent. And that's sort of always been my guide, is, you know, we're, you know, our budget doesn't work any differently than my household budget works. It goes up based on inflation, so, yeah, I suspect by the end of the year, inflation will come a bit. Probably not to a four or five percent level, so, you know, again, that that was why I had the comment that. This isn't the worst news I've I've heard at the start of budget season. You know, in past years, it's been six, seven, eight, ten percent, as council well knows, if if we don't make any adjustments. So hopefully it continues that way, and and thank you, Nicholas, you did a good job, appreciate it, thank you.
Counselor Shonville, yeah, no.
I've not enjoyed, I I think all the ideas that have come out are really good. And. Then I think we just have to see where it's all gonna go, I don't know. I'd like it below five percent, for sure. Probably closer to three.
Now you're talking.
See how it could happen.
Sure.
We're gonna dig in.
Going backwards.
And on the status of the the bonds as part of the budget schedule, I I forgot my laptop at home, so I didn't have the presentation. Didn't include an update on the status of all the bond money in the calendar.
That's what in the, in the development process, we can, we can build that into, I I imagine that would be part of, yeah, capital or, yeah, yep. The bond status. We'll make sure that's part of that presentation. No, I mean, look, I think this is very helpful, you know, I think, I I'm not surprised that all the the feedback was about things that that are wanted. That's what I expected to hear, but even with, even though it's, you know, it it's a, maybe not the worst starting point. It's still a situation where to do these things on top of where we start, we're still gonna have to make some hard decisions. So I don't wanna be the the killjoy, but I I also don't want to, you know, we we will have some some tough conversations. And I think we have some good direction of where to start heading. But even then, we'll have to, we'll have to confront some some tough budget math and we'll get there, I'm sure we will.
Counselor Stokel.
Semi-related is, are we gonna have a TIF update at some point? Or is TIF?
Yeah, that that should be probably next, next couple of weeks.
We had a conversation with Stephanie.
We have, I think we have a site visit.
Another one, well, we've got the site vision visit with Vepsi this time of week.
Right.
But that's not, that's basically related to stuff we've already done, not to the, to the. The stuff, the work that Whitenburg is doing, so, and the last time we talked with Stephanie. I don't think that we scheduled another update to the council, but we should.
We won't, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm excited, so.
Thank you. And Donna's too.
All right, well, if there are no, if there's no further feedback on where you wanna cut. Then, then I think that takes us to round table, and I'll start with, I think I started with word one last. Alright, so I'll start with word three this time, so counselor Stokel.
I'll pass.
Counselor Derry.
A couple of things, number one, Erica Rail and I are working on a little. Kind of collaborating to get some camping gear together. It's change of season, so with that, we have an increased heighten of homelessness. People that are transitioning in whatever way, so we're kind of trying to work together to get some stuff together for another way. Camping gear, whether it be tents, tarp, sleeping bags, all that stuff, so they can either get it to me. They can get it over to Erica Rail at another way. That's a good opportunity in the community, thank you for those that came out and supported Spalding on Saturday for sixteen nothing win. Over Rice, nice game.
Sixteen nothing.
Sixteen nothing, we had a nice homecoming event, so thanks for all the community that was really involved and that was a blessing. Thursday, be a bond field for six o'clock for the little guys from kindergarten to fourth grade. And then we also have our high school Spalding team will be playing at seven o'clock on Friday. So come out and support us, really, we appreciate everybody that's come out and supported us and just appreciate the community, thank you.
That takes us to, let's go to board one, counselor Lozon.
Good.
Counselor Shonville.
I've been. Really happy to see how well the council seems to be working with one another, with humor, which I love. And. A lot of goodwill on everybody's part, so I want to thank everybody for that.
Thank you.
That takes us to our line in the sand, counselor.
We're damn straight, it does, no. I agree, I agree wholeheartedly with counselor Shon Bell, and I agree with what everyone has said about. Just how how good it was to have such a comprehensive and well organized presentation of the budget. Not just, not that we haven't had that in past years, but because, you know, as counselor Lozon pointed out, there's a lot of fresh faces over the past couple of years. So I think that it's a really nice way, tonight went really well and it made me happy, now I feel all warm and fuzzy, so.
Counselor Booty.
So went to Chief Brent's retirement and. It was obviously was sad and and, you know, great for him, was sad for us. One of the things that happened as he was riding down through, they did this like sign off. On on the radio and. I I don't know why it touched me, but it was actually like really moving, you know, people were signing off. You know, as he was leaving, and I've gotta, I've gotta reach out to Larry to get that again. But that was, it was, it was really nice and, yeah, I posted some pictures online for people who wanna watch.
I agree, it was a great event.
Yeah. Great backdrop, by the way.
And and I have nothing tonight, so unless there's anything from Carol or Nicholas.
Did we want to take ten minutes in executive session to talk about the real estate in Twenty Two Hill Street?
Kind of would, you know, only. Kind of would, you know, only because I, I just don't think it's going to be a difficult conversation.
Motion for findings.
For the council. Yeah. So I think if we can just get a head start, it's only 8:30.
We have a motion for findings from Counsel Booton, the second by Counsel Derry. All those in favor, say aye.
Motion to go into executive session to discuss real estate.
There's a motion by Counsel Booton.
Second.
Second by Counsel Lozon to enter executive session at 8:31 to discuss real estate with RC Manager.
Yes.
Yep. Alright. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, we'll get into executive session.
Nicholas, there's no cost for bulk trash, right?
No.
No.
It's only available for city residents.
I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like you expect any action.
No.
Oh, no.
No, it's on the agenda for next week. We're just
Right.
Doing groundwork.
Just double checking. Have a good one.
You too.
You need assistance, Nicholas? I'm just offering.
I think I'm about to assign you. If you don't get, if you don't get it, let me know.
Worst case scenario, we can always call you.
Yeah, it should be me and the one that says CC system.
Oh. CC system.
Yeah. That's you guys.
Which is this one? Let me get up and start dancing now.
It's pretty.
So did you get it, Counselor?
Yep, I already got it. I just haven't clicked on it yet.
Okay, so now we join.
Yeah.
Yeah, you should be able to click on the TV and join.
Oh, cool.
Okay, we are not in executive session. We're still in the main public session, right? Yeah, I'm just making sure that we knew that first.